I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, tonight's meeting will be video and audio based depending on whether you're in the audience, Pauline Michael.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the minutes from the Board of Selectments meeting of March 25th, 2019, as writ.
Second. If you're in favor, I'm in favor.
Correspondence, April 16th, 2019, voter registration will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, April 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the Town Clerk's office. Voter registration is being held in anticipation of the annual town election, as well as the upcoming town meetings. Two, as a reminder, the town will host a Candidates Night on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. The location has changed, and the event will be held in a gymnasium at the Shepherd Municipal Building. Candidates for election will be present to answer your questions. Three, as an FYI, Town of Warren has grant funds available to assist with housing concerns. Some are lead paint removal, foundation repairs, electrical plumbing repairs, and improvements. Heating system, roof repair or replacement, insulation project, septic system repair or replacement, and removal of architectural barriers. For more information, property owners are encouraged to contact PVPC at (413) 781-6045 and ask about housing rehab assistance. More information is also on the town's website at www.warn-mass.gov. A public hearing will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, April 17th, at 6:15 p.m. in the gymnasium at the Shepherd Municipal Building regarding the proposed changes to the solar bylaw. That is it for correspondence.
Just FYI, I see the end result of some of the work that's been done through the grant application in town, and people that are looking to get some work that they don't really have the financial means right now. It's a good program to get involved with, and they do excellent work. So if you're looking to have something that you have down in your house, you can't find out if you're applicable unless you apply, so please take advantage of the state's willingness to give out some financial assistance. Tom, how are these over there? Chapter 90 reimbursement.
Yes, Chairman, you have before you some project reimbursement requests for some projects that were completed last year. There was about $186,000 worth of Chapter 90 money that went toward Sadi Road, which ended up costing about $204,000. Reed Street is on there for full amount of Chapter 90 money, as well as Spring Street too. And the Spring Street project was the town's contribution to the grant that we received that I assisted with the writing with for the culvert replacement. That grant was $348,000, and I spent a little bit over $50,000 to redo the road, as well as the sidewalk.
Any comments, Chairman?
No.
I weigh the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Just give the total amount.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the request for reimbursement for the total amount of $266,358.80.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Hold on, Mark.
Right.
You're all good.
Second.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, will you guys assign an app? If I could just discuss this year's projects that are currently planned?
You go ahead, dear Tom.
Uh, it was supposed to be, Bridge Street was supposed to be scheduled for paving tomorrow, but that rain we had over the weekend didn't know him any good, and that's going to be postponed for a little while.
Yeah, I see you up there today.
Uh, a new request that I'm working on for bids is gonna be Douglas Road. Old Westbrook Field Road's gonna receive a mill and fill from the bridge to the center of town. And I'm also contemplating two other roads, but, and as I said, last week's meeting, for those of you who could just call me on request, the roads that you'd like to see done, and the only requirement that I have is it's not the road you're on. Makes sense, everyone wants their road paved, but just contact me at the office, (413) 436-7677, and we can put a list together.
Tom, there's still an amount of money that's going towards the school street, Lumbar, more?
Yeah, I just got approval back for that, that was gonna be $150,000 that we signed off towards that, and that's gonna be a project that's probably gonna be close to $700, if not $1,000. The grant that Mr. Dunphy through PVCP has, he's not quite done a couple of the amount to do the whole project, therefore he was asking for some supplement from the town. So there's 150 that I set aside for that. I also have some set aside mentally for walking culture road, if we get that grant, which I should hear about, proclaim the next 30 days on a replacement of a culvert that's constantly flooding, and then we'll be getting new monies in July as well.
One of the roads, I think we have to pay attention to it right up here.
Yeah.
This has been patched and dug up, and as you can see, it's-
I think when it comes time for this, I'm gonna look at doing a full rehab on High Street, on Bridge Street as well, but I know with, because of the stream and the culvert requirements, and Army Corps of Engineers and everything else, I think Bridge Street alone will be over $200, $250,000. And I get $280,000 here, so gotta try to figure out what to do with some of this stuff.
But, you know, like you say, just for the on the basis, this is-
Yeah. Yeah, High is definitely one I wanna look into with, um, get some costs and see whether the sidewalk was completely reprogrammed, it's okay, so forth.
Tom, an observation the other day, during the heavy rainstorm, I know it was absorbent and not a water, but when I was leaving for work going up Old South Beach Road, all those catch basins or culverts or whatever were backfilling up to the road.
Yeah, there's one in particular going down the hill on the left-hand side that needs to get cleaned out.
Is it cranking, or are they just too small to handle that amount of volume of water?
It was just that volume of water was just amazing, the amount to handle.
When are you figuring on Bridge?
Soon as it dries out. I was really hoping for tomorrow, but the way the water's coming off the hill, and like, out of the private property, knowing how much we can do, and I'm not gonna put asphalt down on a wet road, it's just gonna fall.
All right, so what are you gonna, are you gonna address that the water comes off that first house there, just always?
The way I, the way I have it designed is just gonna be an overlay, so the lip of the overlay will prevent the water from coming in the road and keep it in the gutter line.
I mean, it's a whole lot of problem with the way it pours out of that.
Yeah.
I'm surprised that wall is still there.
Yeah, it's, it's that whole hillside too, so there's a lot, lot of water there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a couple of new employment agreements to ratify. We had our fire chief and our town accountant's contract for up this year, negotiated that, those are all set, and they penned some signatures.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify the employment agreements for the town accountant, and the fire chief has written.
Second. If you're in the discussion, you're in none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So just everybody's aware those are both three-year contracts, employment agreements for the accountant and the fire chief.
Mr. Stevens.
I've done one before, so it's gonna show me who's aware.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept and approve the special license for the Warren Senior Center for May 14th, 2019, for the event to be held for the Warren Cultural Conference.
I'll second this, the hours, you wanna read the hours on, nine to nine?
The hours of the event, six to nine p.m. Licenses for sale of wine and malt beverages only.
Second.
It's for decorate and sip, go decorate a cupcake and drink some wine.
Sip away.
Or maybe drink some wine first, then-
Yeah, Atlanta.
May 4th.
Senior Center is, is on there?
Yep, yep, it's on there.
Questions made, second.
And over the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Eight and nine are gonna be passed over. We have some eight-minute information and some stuff that we have to take care of, so that'll be put out to the next meeting.
So we're just gonna post a quick meeting for the 23rd, Pat 545, to sign the warrants.
Just to sign the warrants, so you say we had some last-minute stuff come in.
For the solar. Solar, which is the hearings for, so, and we've had a hearing, and wait for final language, put it to the warrant.
So those, those favors will be signed on Tuesday. Let's jump into warrants, here, John.
Make a motion to accept warrants number 78 and 79 for the amounts of $36,702.44 and $34,481.51, dated 3/25/2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, warrant number 80 and 81, the amounts of $38,499.41, $686,767.29, dated 4/1/2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also have warrants number 83 and 84 for the amounts of $36,590.97 and $87,758.92, dated 4/8/2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last but not least, we have warrants number 85 and 86, the amounts of $34,462.13 and $18,448.11, dated 4/15/2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Drawdowns and other invoices for the fiscal year '18. We have invoice number three for the Community Assistance Program, grant number 844, for PVPC, in the amount of $9,364.98.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it for warrants and invoices.
New business, Mr. Nardi.
The only question I have is, are we supposed to settle the town hall plaque, as, I'm sure with regards to the town hall plaque?
We talked about it last week.
Last week, okay.
Yeah, so it's coming up May 12th?
12th.
For what?
For what?
That was May 4th, so sad that they made it for it.
Okay.
You guys invited?
It's good to go.
Yep.
Was good to do the speech.
Anything from you, John?
Um, no. Um, like I said, we had a lot of water the other day, but it was handled pretty well. So, that was the last of it, it was a heck of a storm.
Yes, it was. All set?
All set, sir.
Thomas didn't consent.
Question on perhaps the budget, how much over minimum are this board gonna allow the school to get?
We voted right now. This board, if I may, Chairman, this board, this board voted the last year's above minimum, which was 534 and change, correct, provided?
Yes.
Somewhere around, so we voted the amount that was approved last year.
Even though they had a surplus of 700?
And they did repurpose, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, gave it about 400,000?
470,000 they put in the budget, I was 733.
Didn't repurpose at all, but 80% of it, I would say, 75% of it, it repurposed towards the budget.
You give him 2 million, he's gonna spend it.
I'm sorry?
You give him 2 million, he's gonna spend it.
Yeah.
I think it's fair, I think it's fair what we put forward, I think with the decrease in population, this is my personal opinion, the decrease in population with the student body, um, the five retired teachers that they plan to replace, and the five new teachers, I just don't think it's warranted to replace or add five new bodies when your population is decreased by more than a hundred students to this own mission here that evening. So I just can't see it. Time to stop. I mean, and like we said, if this amount gets amended and gets put back to middle 36, um, we're probably gonna go hold on the town meeting and have to caucus and discuss with FinCom, where do we go from here? And we've stated, if that amount goes through, we're looking at cuts, leaks, fire, highway, I mean, this is realistic stuff. We're looking at absorb a $500 increase for a house of 200,000, or a tax rate again on top of what they received this year. It's just crazy, we're taxing our town. Roads are horrible, I mean, there's, can't do it.
You're gonna make these points, you're gonna make these points at the town meeting?
I'll probably state something to that effect prior to the meeting starting, before we get into the whole hoopla of what the town shares, what Pathfinder shares, I don't have a problem standing up and putting out some of those numbers to people, and letting them know, you know, but unfortunately, people don't see this increase until July 1st, until their mortgage is escrow, and then it's like, it's like a year behind, and then they see, and they're like, oh my God. You know, I don't know how many more times FinCom and us can explain it to these people and say, this is what your tax rate's gonna be, folks. You want this, can we absorb it? And, and we want what's best for the kids, this board does, everybody does. We wanna make sure our students are taken care of. We also have seniors and other people who are in fixed incomes that just can't afford these things. It's tough, and we have other departments that have been fiscally responsible, in my opinion this year, that need to take pressings. There's other buildings in town that need to take pressings. We dumped a lot of money into Warren Elementary and the high school for problems that were preventable. My opinion on that. Thanks, sir.
Another question.
Well, just add that, I watched the meeting here when the superintendent was here, et cetera, and, uh, everybody thinks that, you know, every department thinks they have to fight for, for the money, and, and I think he's missing the point. I think if he, if he caught the kids to learn within their means, okay, uh, then that would be more valuable lesson than, than, his, his mental attitude is totally, totally wrong, okay, and, uh, you know, and, and I agree, I want everything for the kids too, but you have to understand that, you know, if the superintendent, in my opinion, is not willing to understand that, then, uh, I'd like to see people on the school committee that will try to convince them of, you know, what's going on. Uh, I think he's just looking at things the wrong way, and, uh, you know, if we don't live within our means, the town, I mean, that, that's how I feel about that situation. Another question is, how much did the staff order cost for the flea department?
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred? Okay, that was taxpayer's money?
Yes, it was.
Okay, uh, some lady asked me from Brimfield about the fireworks that were canceled, that's supposed to be held in the spring?
Uh, that's to the Parks Department, Mr. Corvall.
Do you know anything about that?
Uh, I, from what I understand, if, if the money hasn't been expended, then the money is still sitting there in Parks' budget.
Okay, so, uh, we may have fireworks in the spring, is that what you're saying?
I don't know if the money is in the-
No, they have, I'm sorry, they have-
Did it in June or something?
Yeah.
I thought somebody said June, I don't know.
Yeah, but Parks is gonna make that-
They are having fireworks, that, I, I received an application for fireworks a couple weeks ago and sent it in, so there is a plan in the works to have fireworks.
Okay, it's good, thank you.
Jerry?
Yeah, if, if we gave them 523,000 to school last year, and they more or less have a surplus of 700 and some odd thousand, why are we giving them the same amount?
Well, so, go ahead.
Good, I, I don't know how to answer that, because, you know, we go through this battle year after year after year, Jerry.
I know.
And how did they come up, just like as Mr. Corvall says, how did they come up with these figures? Because it doesn't seem to jive a lot.
Well, we, we know that the school there, the gymnasium floor, it's been a couple of years that it's been in trouble, okay, and, uh, they're, they haven't done anything about it.
Not that they have.
So, you know, why, why are we still giving them the 523,000? I, I would, I would think that if, if they have the 700 over, it should be reduced, not, not stay the same, or go up. You know, what justification is that?
Well, you do have fixed costs that increase on a yearly basis, that's a set number, right? You have contractual agreements with a lot of the staff up there, so that's, that's a percentage of it, right? What percentage that is, I can't begin to understand some of their budget numbers, so, but there are, you gotta expect some kind of increase on a yearly basis over their budget.
Well, also, you know, we're, we're also talking about the town employees and cutting services and everything like that. Uh, the town has to live within its budget, why, why doesn't the school, uh, live within a budget? You know, they just keep on increasing the money year after year, and we keep on giving it to them year after year.
Oh.
And if, and if I was the head of the school, next year, instead of asking you for a million, I'd ask you for a million and I'd have for 2 million. I seriously would. If you're gonna give it to me, I'll take it.
Well, Mr. Sauer, if you would have, if you were, I don't know if you were here the other night, when one of our school community members, Mr. Morgan, stated, you know, we're always gonna ask for the higher amount, because the amount can only go down at the town meeting, it can't go up. They're always asking for a lot, they pack the room with the people who are going to vote, and we're outnumbered, and, and they prevail. I looked at it this way, that it's, it's, we can't be at zero, and we had this discussion with FinCom, it's just unrealistic, so, and I have realized Chapter 70 is in need of a fix, and there's other contractual things like John had pointed out, so I was more comfortable with that amount, and I think our neighboring town was more comfortable with that amount, um, and it's fair. I agree with you that E and D probably 100% of that should have been repurposed to that amount. Um, we had a discussion the other night, David, you were there, with regards to whether or not we can force them to use the last of that amount, based on national law, which we're gonna look into with council, I think, um, to see if we can ask them to take the last 140 or whatever it is, and apply that towards the budget, offset some of the, the amount put towards us, so we're waiting on that, but it's tough, you know, they, they put those people, those numbers in the chairs, they vote, and then, you know, I think, and I think Adam made a good point at that meeting also, you know, that we're left with the crumbs. You know, that's what the town's left with, and then we, we make do with that. They don't live within their means, and I think that there's at least two or three school community members right now that have challenged that, but they're outnumbered. So there are some people that are sitting in that school committee that are not in agreement with this, from my understanding, and we received an email from one of them, so.
To answer your question, yes, I was here for that meeting, and, uh, I, I just hear the same thing over and over again with the school, and, uh, you know, I hear it, and I'm now one of the people that disbelieve just about anything that the school has to say.
One of the ways to fix it, in my opinion, Mr. Sauer, is to amend the regional agreement as a dated document that benefits the school department and the school committee, really doesn't give the town a lot of power. I think that document there, if we amended that agreement, and I am a fervor believer, I think one select board member should sit on the school committee from each ascending town to have a voice, would be much better off, um, but that's a process, and, but I do think it's something that we should be looking at, especially if we're, if the school department's looking to try to regionalize with other school districts, it would be amended at that point anyway, so I think that's a start right there. You fix that, and you have a voice on that board, it's much better.
I would, I would agree with you, but I don't, I don't think that will happen underneath the present system, that the school is more or less operating underneath.
Well, you're gonna vote in the people that you support, right?
Pardon?
There are people on the school committee that are questioning the spending of the school. There's people running for school committee right now that have the same feelings, right? You need a balance in there, right? I've gone to a lot of school committee meetings over the last nine months, and prior to that, and I see what goes on there, you know, and there's not a lot of discussion, right? I think that this board needs more discussion, more people to bring stuff to the table and talk about it, and people that are willing to lead and make their opinions and voices heard. I think you're starting to see a shift in the school committee, hopefully for the better. Not to say that there's not a school committee board member that doesn't want to see the kids taken care of, right? But the way they're going about it, I think in a lot, a lot of, a lot of ways is the wrong way, so we'll see how it goes.
I would, I would agree with you there, but I also went to school committee meetings a number of times, and I don't go because all I see is bobble heads in the back of a car. Whatever they say, they just shake their heads up and down.
That's why I don't go, Mr. Sauer.
Pardon?
That's why I don't go. I went to a couple, and it's just, it's very, very-
You know, I mean, it's the same thing, uh, meeting after meeting. I think that, I think that the people that should vote for other people to take their places, that would give a more balanced view on the school committee. And as you say, John, you got people that are running this year, and I hope that the townspeople would come out and vote for new membership underneath the school committee.
So how it goes?
Yep.
Mr. Corvall?
Does the superintendent help him, when he, when he gives his budget forward, does he have total control of that? Or does the, the board, so the board can recommend, but he has total control of that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's the issue, okay? How, how long has this guy been in this town?
Ten years.
Ten years? Okay, he's not getting it, and he never will get it, okay? It, it's hurting this town, okay, and progressively, over the years, this is what you got, and it's worse. And money, throwing money doesn't educate kids, okay? His, his mindset is, is, is wrong, okay, so, uh, need to get people on the school committee and get rid of the guy. That's my opinion.
Yeah, preaching to the choir, Mr. Corvall.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Also, the other thing is, uh, I don't remember now whether it was on the FinCom or on capital planning, we have asked for figures to back up some of the requests that he has had.
underneath the present system, that the school is more or less operating underneath.
Well, you're gonna vote in the people that you support, right?
Pardon?
There are people on the school committee that are questioning the spending of the school. There's people running for school committee right now that have the same feelings, right? You need a balance in there, right? I've gone to a lot of school committee meetings over the last nine months and prior to that, and I see what goes on there now. There's not a lot of discussion, right? I think that this board needs more discussion, more people to bring stuff to the table and talk about it, and people that are willing to lead and make their opinions and voices heard. And I think you're starting to see a shift in the school committee, hopefully for the better. Not to say that there's not a school committee board member that doesn't want to see the kids taken care of, right? But the way they're going about it, I think, in a lot, a lot, a lot of ways is the wrong way, so. We'll see how it goes.
I would, I would agree with you there, but I also went to school committee meetings a number of times, and I don't go because all I see is bobble heads in the back of a car. Whatever they say, they just shake their heads up and down.
That's why I don't go, Mr. Tower.
Pardon?
That's why I don't go. I went to a couple, and it's just, it's very, very.
You know, I mean, it's the same thing, meeting after meeting. I think that, I think that the people that should vote for other people to take their places, that would give a more balanced view on the school committee. And as you say, John, you got people that are running this year, and I hope that the townspeople would come out and vote for new membership underneath the school committee.
See how it goes.
Yep.
Mr. Corvall?
Does the superintendent help him? When he, when he gives his budget forward, does he have total control of that? Or does the, the board, so the board can recommend, but he has total control of that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's the issue, okay? How, how long has this guy been in this town?
Ten years.
Ten years? Okay, he's not getting it, and he never will get it, okay? It, it's hurting this town, okay? And progressively, over the years, this is what you got, and it's worse. And money, throwing money doesn't educate kids, okay? His, his mindset is, is, is wrong, okay? So need to get people on the school committee and get rid of the guy. That's my opinion.
Yeah, preaching to the choir, Mr. Corvall.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Also, the other thing is, I don't remember now whether it was on the FinCom or on capital planning. We have asked for figures to back up some of the requests that he has had, and they have said that, yes, they will get us the figures, and they never have. We've been lost around the floor many times with that. I don't know whether some of the people that were on the FinCom or on capital planning that are here in this room would agree to it or not. That's, that's basically all I have to say as far as the appropriations for the school.
I mean, I, when I, when I sat on it, you know, I still have the paperwork there. I got four and a half million dollars worth of work that needs to be done at the three schools in town. How do you prior, how do you prioritize something that needs a hundred projects done? Because one year just takes precedent, next year that drops to the bottom of the list, and something else comes up, but you're talking an awful lot of money. The grounds are in horrible shape, the buildings are in horrible shape, and we can't balance the budget to save ourselves.
Mark, Mark, I, I understand that, but what has he done to do this? Okay, there's, there's an agreement with the school that anything over twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, the town would chip in and do, okay? But he has, since I have been on the capital planning, he has waited and tried to group more than one item to get the twenty-five thousand. And whenever I was chairman on that, I said, you can't do that. It has to be one item. And they just seem to let the stuff go. And, you know, I, I don't understand it. If you, if you have a door in your house that needs fixing, what are you gonna do, wait to get another door so you can get, buy two instead of one? It's kind of ridiculous statement.
You know, the mentality has to change, Jerry, plain and simple. Everybody in this room will agree with that. You know, you can sit there, when, when Mr. K was here, and a lot of the blame went on to the system is broken with the state. And I think everybody here can agree with that. But the system down there at Quavo also needs work to be done. It's obviously not working.
It does.
Because it comes down to, once a year, a screening map between taxpayers in town and see who wins the fight every election. And if they get the money, we don't hear from anybody for another three hundred and sixty-four days until the next town meeting where, how much are we gonna get this year? And it's to the point, like Darryl and John said, it's to the point now where it's just killing us.
Well, you, you know right off the bat that one of the first things that they're gonna do is they're gonna say, let's bring the school committee stuff to the school up first. He's gonna start the meeting, and as soon as when the vote's over, they're all gonna take their fannies out of there.
And that was brought up by, again, by F R chief at the meeting last time, which is.
I, I understand, I understand that, okay? And I, and I heard him say that.
So how do you change that, Jerry?
Well, you have to try to get something out to the people to have them vote. I know that, I know that a couple of years ago, the FinCom put in a reverse nine-one-one call. Barry put it through to get the people out. We had a fairly larger attendance at the annual town meeting. You know, but we, we have to do something about it, whether the FinCom does it by itself, or whether the selectmen get on board and we try to write something to get something out in the mailing to the people in the town, the taxpayers, or what. Something should be done to help the people that really can't afford to have the increase in their taxes.
Like me.
Point is, get those people out there voting, right?
Pardon?
The point being is, we need to get those people out there voting.
You say there's no superintendent?
That's, that's, that's right. You do have to get people out there to vote. And as I have said a number of times, that people get the government and everything else that they deserve if they don't vote.
David?
I'll just add what Jerry's saying. FinCom is looking at putting something together that we can communicate to the, to the residents ahead of the meeting to make them aware, not only that they ought to attend, but the significance, and I'll say the seriousness of what, of what we're facing with this, with this budget. It, it gets bigger and bigger every year. As Jerry was mentioning, the above minimum up until two thousand and fourteen was seventy-five thousand a year. By two thousand and seventeen, then it risen to three hundred and some thousand. Last year was five hundred and some thousand. This year, they're asking for a million. And, you know, the town has taken some difficult decisions and steps. Regionalization of dispatch, hard decision to make, but it ends up saving money. And, you know, so, you know, and those are the things that came out in the meeting when the school was here, that they need to be looking at, looking at some of that. But we hope to try to communicate with folks, as you guys have been doing in these meetings and a couple of others, of what you vote on in town meeting ends up impacting your taxes. And trying to summarize, you know, succinctly and clearly for people so they understand what they vote on and what the potential tax impact could be for them, all from other things being, being the same. So we're working on that. We haven't yet finalized it, but we hope to bring that to the select board and hopefully get some experience in that.
Listen, some of the, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, the article that the tree warden put forth, originally it was thirty-five thousand, now it's a sum of money.
Yes, it would probably, I think it's, it'll probably be less than the amount just because we're looking at what we have for expenses right now, what we can afford.
Well, originally, he asked for twenty.
It would probably be closer to that.
Okay, I think he'd be happy with that.
We wanna do something, but I don't think we can do, in my opinion, I don't think we can do the thirty thousand, so that's why we listed it as a sum of money. It'd be less than thirty.
But are you gonna put that amount in the article?
It may not be.
In the motion?
It'll be in the motion.
Has to be in the motion.
It has to be in the motion, correct. It may not be in the article, but it won't be more than thirty.
Well, I thought finance had requested that, you know, if there was money involved, that it's part of the article.
We're not gonna sign until next week.
I mean, if we know by then?
We might know, but we listed it as a sum of money for now. We might know. I mean, I've run some numbers and looked at some things, and I pretty much know what we have, what we wanna have looked over, but, so it very well could be there. It won't exceed thirty, it'll be less than thirty. Hopefully, we can put a number into the article.
Okay, and the other one was for the money that the capital planning wanted to go against engine five. I mean, the same thing.
Right, so we're not sure what we're gonna do with the town hall and boiler right now, and that is an emergency at this point in time. So we may need to utilize some of that money, offset some of the boiler projects, so we may not be able to commit the whole amount. Depends on what we have in free cash. Boiler right now is gonna be sixty-five to seventy. That has to get done.
But you have an article for the boiler.
But we haven't identified the funding source. Boiler is a definite, that's going that, whether it's ready to cooperate, we don't want it to be that. But, so we may need to take some of that or use some of that money for that and only put maybe thirty-five or forty thousand towards the fire engine. It depends on what we have in free cash and to meet the needs of the tree warden.
I have a question is, the fifteen thousand for detail, is that?
That's a citizens petition, we can't answer to that, right?
Correct.
I mean, isn't that part of the budget?
My understanding is, is they're asking for that so that they can be paid from the town once the detail work has been completed. So right now, we wait for the vendor to reimburse the town before the money is set down.
But I thought we had an article like years ago.
It's currently at fifteen, they wanna up it a little.
Yeah, they wanna increase it.
Okay, I'll increase it.
Because that amount runs out. They wanna increase that.
Okay, because I know we had voted on that a while.
So they're, they're seeking an increase to that amount, to that cap.
Go ahead, Brian.
What's the average turnout like on the town meetings? How many people? I know, I know the candidate's date, election date is like six hundred average, I'd say, over the last thirty years, out of five thousand residents?
I, I think if you look at the, the notes from the clerk's office, they, you know, it's very well documented, and I think it averages, I think the last one was a hundred and sixty people.
At, at the meeting? So, you know, like I said, like changing the attitude of the superintendent is gonna be a lot easier than getting people to the meetings, because.
So if a hundred of those out of a hundred and sixty are in favor of the school, we're dead in the water.
Exactly, exactly. So, so where's the other four thousand something people, you know? So that, that's the problem.
There's twenty-four hundred registered.
That hasn't changed in thirty years. I don't expect it to change this year.
Exactly, that's, that's a close to the problem.
I think that the superintendent is doing the children a disservice by not teaching them to live within their means, okay? I used, when I was growing up, I heard yes maybe one time. I heard no like a thousand times, okay? It, the thing, the formula's flipped around here, okay? And it's, and it's just a question of living within your means.
Yes.
And if he doesn't understand that, what he's doing to the town, then.
Well, we tried to make it very clear.
Yeah, I know, I, you know, watching it and what I saw, I don't think it registered, okay, at all.
We'll see on second Tuesday in May.
And it's, it's not just him, it's, it's everybody to have kids in school to understand that, you know?
Okay, folks, we have a short meeting Tuesday.
Forty-five.
Back.
Five forty-five.
Anything from you there, Mr. Senator?
No.
We have a motion.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.